Okay, that's the end of public participation and we're going to move on to discussion action items. I know we pulled a few from consent, should we move into that first? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I guess we'll do it in the order, that's a good point. Lisa was first, so you've been anticipating with bated breath your, or we've been anticipating with bated, you may not have been.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Bated breath, wow, okay.
I had a good picture of you in the Capitol over there, I like that.
Yeah, that was really nice. Jean was like, "Wait, wait, I want a picture of you two." I didn't know she was going to use it first.
And what is this, MSU week or something?
No, we got the memo, didn't you?
I don't wear green.
You can go over there.
We can help you.
That's not the kind of help I need.
All right then. Just a couple of updates from the report and a few other newsworthy items. As you've been probably hearing, the retirement legislation went through. The latest estimates have been that around 17,000 to 18,000 folks are going to, employees are going to take advantage of it. That's more than the trend lines suggest would have retired had they not done an incentive, but not as much as the legislature was hoping in order to get the savings. I think they were hoping for around 28,000 and they got 17,000, 18,000. I think the trend line showed about 6,000, 5,000 to 6,000 would have without anything. So that may impact the budget debate as we move on. If they don't have the savings, obviously that means they don't have the funding to keep the budgets at the levels that they were at least anticipating. The other piece of that was that, you may have seen in the news, that there's been talk about using the school aid fund to fund some of the higher education costs, which is an allowable use of school aid under the Constitution. It can go for any education. There's been quite a pushback, obviously, from the K-12 community who view it as a raid on the school aid fund. And I'm not sure what the outcome will be down the road. It will probably depend greatly on, we'll probably learn a great deal more about it from the target-setting meetings that are happening right now between the quadrants, the head of the Senate, the head of the House, and the governor's office. They'll be setting targets over the next week or so and then we'll start seeing budgets, hopefully, coming out of the conference committee. At the federal level, the big piece that's been moving has been the Education Jobs Fund, which is that $23 billion investment in teachers and school employees to prevent layoffs and help on the economy as well. In fact, in the report that I sent you, I referenced a report by the Economic Policy Institute that showed the impact on gross domestic product if you invest in education, which I thought was sort of an interesting, they don't usually do quite that kind of a correlation about education investing and how it helps the overall economy in sort of that way. I thought it might be useful to you as you're doing advocating. I've been working with Maggie Randolph in the governor's office on this, including passing along information from her to the various membership organizations so that they can advocate to the congressional members, the Michigan Congressional Delegation, to push through this legislation, passing along information to the, you know, school administrators, school board associations and those groups. In addition, the federal liaison network, which is a little subgroup of the group that the chief, CCSSO, the chief, the Council of Chief State School Officers.
CACSO.
But all the federal liaisons, all the people in each state have also been communicating and sharing information, which I've been passing along to various of our statewide Michigan associations to try to push their membership, again, to push Congress to try to get this bill moving. The most recent information on that is it's still iffy whether it's going to keep moving or not. There's been talk about the fact that it's a spending bill as opposed to an investment bill. And so we had, the CCSSO recommended that their membership send a letter to their Michigan Congressional Delegation, which I know Mike did. I would also recommend that you work through, if you can, work through your national organization, NASB. I know that they've been supportive of this as well and if there's, they may also have, from that perspective, a suggested letter or something like that, that the board can use to send to the Michigan Congressional Delegation. And you may wish to do that to continue pushing the Congressional Delegation to take it up. This is, it's one of those things where, right now, the spending side is winning, is what we're hearing, is that what they're being told is, this is just spending run amok, this has nothing to do with education, which, since you guys are sort of on the front lines and hear it all the time, I'm sure you know otherwise. There's also a school turnaround bill that just started moving, that I just found out about today. And it's going to be looking at how can we train the different school leaders to implement the intervention models that are part of the federal race to the top and the, eventually the ESEA reauthorization. So this is something that I just learned about today and as I learn more, I'll pass it along to you guys, to the board. But it was introduced by Senator Bennett from Colorado and it really is the first piece I've seen where the Obama administration and Congress are trying to take some of the ideas that they've had in race to the top and actually put it in standing legislation. So this will be the beginning of sort of what we've been talking about, which is, we could have done this, these changes now in state law and try to win some money with the race to the top, or we'll have to do them later anyway, because this is where it's all moving. And so this is the beginning of that process kind of going through. That's what I have for you.
Bennett, the one who was the Denver superintendent and had been rumored to be the Secretary of Ed and then won the Senate race instead, or was appointed.
Yep.
Questions or comments for Lisa? Lee?
No, I just, I mentioned to Lisa that I saw in Gogwore that they were, some, one of the committees today was holding a hearing on, or a meeting on PA 72, and I wondered what was happening with that legislation.
I looked it up after you said that and Andrea actually helped me look it up as well. And those are specific to the municipality side, not to the education side, the changes in those bills. I'll keep an eye on them, just because since they are amending that act, you never know if they'll try to slide something in.
Right, you never know what's going to happen.
But that would explain why they went to the Government Operations Committee and not to the Education Committee.
They probably won't go to the Education Committee.
Right, right, because they're looking at just the municipality side of the law.
Do they intend to look at the other side?
Well, the Education Committee has been looking at the other side and Representative Nathan had a subcommittee looking at it and came out with a report that's available online. I think I forwarded it to you.
Yeah, well, that we got, but I wondered if the, if that's the committee that's going to have jurisdiction over it.
You never know. Lately, the committee jurisdiction is sort of anyone's guess. Politics are being played, so.
No kidding.
Just keep me off.
Surprise.
Keep me off the Oversight Committee. Really, I mean, I, it's a, as you know, in our discussions in the Legislative Committee here, it's a worry that they think that those of us in some of these positions, like me and the State Treasurer, could actually oversee on a daily basis some of these decisions. When you put those people in, it's meant to be put in, that they're making decisions on their own and I'm a little concerned about that, if it doesn't happen. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Now, what order would you like to take up? These are for the audience, in case you weren't with us this morning, these are items on the consent agenda. A number of board members have asked for it to be removed, which is appropriate, that's the way we do our business and want to interact a little bit on them before we take a vote.
How do we do the other ones first and get them out of the way?
Those two, but were there others?
No.
Just those two?
No, there are two others.
N and O.
Yeah, N and O.
But Kath suggested maybe we take up.
The other two, one is the approval of American Sign Language standards.
So you want to do the remain, the other consent agenda items first?
So I move the, the, items L and M.
There are others.
Kath's moving L and M.
And Q and R and F. I mean, you want to move it.
All of them.
N and O.
Items N and Q.
All the rest of them.
With the exception of N and O.
N and O. Support for that?
Support.
For Nancy?
With the exception of N and O.
What about the school bus safety week? We didn't talk about that.
You can't do it now.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, same. Thank you. And which one are we?
Let's do item N.
Item N was?
That's the common core standard.
Okay.
For Nancy's benefit, we did have a good presentation, some editorializing, some discussion and questions, which I don't know how best to catch you up on, but I think it was all.
Well, I'll just go ahead and ask the questions that I had and then if I'm redundant, you can just say, "Yeah, I've been there, done it, forget it." And then I'll catch up with somebody else. I know, I shouldn't give you that leverage, should I? And I appreciate, I want to let you know that I appreciate so much the opportunity, at least, to be a part of this. I was unable to be here this morning. I was with 27 of the young people that we say we serve, so.
Nice, attractive shirt.
Well, you know, and clearly, I don't know, my fellow board members got the, you know, the Stanford colors.
Your side of the table. It's really interesting.
We didn't do as good with the memo, though.
Right.
I didn't get the white shirt memo.
Clothes in the blacks, yeah.
Exactly. So we're interesting, they're drab, I mean, you know. I guess my biggest concern.
Can I, may I, I'm sorry, a little out of protocol, but there's some folks in the audience who've been here the whole day that I think helped develop the standards for American Sign Language. And even though it was on the consent agenda, and the board was so impressed with it, they passed it on our consent agenda, but wanted to make sure you were aware and also thank you for your efforts and wanted to acknowledge that before you left.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Sorry, Nancy, I just wanted to.
No, no, you're absolutely right, absolutely.
Thank you for doing it.
And it just, they support what we pass.
We sure hope so.
Yes, no, they developed them, hand-handed.
I guess the questions that I had around Common Core standards were not so much the Common Core standards themselves, because if I've learned nothing else, being on this board over the last several years of passing core content expectations for high school, elementary, middle school, it's that we could be here till, from now until doomsday discussing exactly what standards should be here, so I'm not about that. What I am asking, and you may have discussed, probably discussed this morning, is I am, my biggest concern, I guess I would say, is how we, what's the process that we go through to align now the common, the common standards that we had with the common standards that we now will have? Or are we expecting to subscribe to some of these, but not all of them? Is it an either or or both and? I guess that's the question that I had.
You want to sit back to the table?
Yeah, Deb and Sally, why don't you come on back? We did kind of get at that, but I think it's worth.
Yeah, repeating.
Yeah, it's a good, a good question.
I just know that we're going to be asked that and I won't be able to answer it.
That was a healthy part of what Deb reviewed this morning.
Right, Deb spent some time, no, it's all right, and, but.
Our staff has done quite a bit of the alignment, if you'd had an opportunity to go, and we've posted those to the website. But the other nice thing to know is that, just as we use the Common Core presentation from Achieve, Achieve has just rolled out excellent computer-based alignment tool. So we'll be able to validate all of our alignment work with the work that Achieve has put together. They have already entered all of our data, all of our content standards, all of the Common Core standards. And that tool is designed in a way that we can go through and actually assess to what degree it's an excellent match, a good match, and then if it doesn't match at all. So we'll have the benefit of that to also work with local school districts as we start rolling those out. So we have done a lot of that alignment work. Everybody was anticipating that that was going to be a need and because Achieve has developed this tool, it is an excellent tool, we went through a webinar on that just Monday, just yesterday. And then we're going to do it again because some of our content consultants weren't able to participate in the webinar. So we've got some great tools. That's the beauty of being a part of this national initiative, is that we didn't have to develop that tool, we'll be able to use that tool, we'll be able to validate what we've already done. And then we will be able to explain that very clearly to the field, where it aligns and where it doesn't align and what to do where there's some misalignment.
So there's, the good news is, our staff spent a lot of hours already doing the alignment and have found that there is very, very close alignment. The bad news is, we didn't get their tool in time, so we spent a lot of hours already doing that work, but Deb is saying that their tool is very, very good, so we'll use their tool so we're aligned with the other states, we'll also be using that tool. But what we talked about Nancy this morning is that there is very, very close alignment. The question that came to my mind as I looked through these, that, by the way, I love this ability to click on and link to things, just there.
Unless it's the Finlandia University application for.
I'm going to ignore that comment.
Told him more than you can.
My question started surfacing when I saw comments like, and I'm just, I'm just going through this just for the heck of it, Michigan's K-8 grade level content expectations for, I don't remember now what this is for, but maybe it's for all of them. But I would see comments in parentheses that was like indirect measurement in first-grade CCSS, which I would assume it's core content, core content, what was the other standard, something or other? Or I would see, 4C is in one, first grade GLICs, or something like that. I tried to imagine, maybe this piece is not going out to the field, but I tried to imagine looking at this, how comfortable I would be, and I've got our Teacher of the Year here, so maybe he can address that, how comfortable I would be looking at this feeling comfortable that if I've developed a delivery of what I believe are the core content expectations that we now have core standards for, am I, am I going to be, am I going to feel assured that I'm not missing something, that I've actually aligned correctly, that I'm not somehow now getting mixed up of what we passed before, what's now, do you kind of get the answer as to what you're?
This alignment, we really primarily were trying to put this together for you in a short timeframe so that you could kind of see the alignment. When we rolled this out to the local school districts, we are, we've already are working with the ISDs on how we would actually use these alignments. It is in our expectation that we just hand this to school districts and they're sort of on their own.
Oh, no, I didn't think so.
We have built that into our rollout strategy to actually help them understand what the alignment is saying and how it helps them. And we'll create additional tools to support that as well. But this Achieve tool will also be very helpful.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Another question I had, and you can, you can take the fifth if you'd like.
Taking the fifth.
You haven't heard it yet. I really want to know, because I can't look at all of, I just plain don't have the time to go one by one, you know, like this, and then think that I might have the brain to know that, yes, that matches, no, it doesn't. I might, but I might not, chances are not. How, how do I want to ask this? Do you feel, or, excuse me, do you agree with the new core content standards that they've really hit it and have hit it as high a level as we have before?
Yes, yes, in fact, it's.
Oh, they didn't take the fifth, oh, good.
Well, I'm just going to tell you what the content consultants told me. They feel this is a, this is a value add. It's more comprehensive, we have the learning progressions, and there are lots of things about these standards which enhance what we already have. So we feel very comfortable, the staff feels very comfortable with that. We know where there might be some, some issues and we've got some ideas about how to deal with that. But, yeah, we think this is a tremendous improvement on what we've already had and we don't feel that we've compromised significantly the rigor that we currently have.
And Deb, maybe John, if you don't mind, your comment this morning, I think added.
The fact that generally, this takes us, continues to take us where we want to go. In fact, it's, you know, the same sort of people progression in terms of standards, but also there was a pushback from many states to try to lead out some of the rigor in math and STEM this spring, but it has now come back so that it is consistent with our already high expectations. So the movement to kind of water down in here has been beaten back to lead us to the place where we want to be and already are.
One of the, thank you. One of the, my last, I think, unless I remember another, one of my last questions would be, one of the big complaints we've had, or, and I think legitimate criticism that we've had of our core content expectations, and is, is that we've got too many, that we're still in the, we're still in the land of a mile wide and an inch deep, not because we're not trying to do rigor, but because we're doing so much. And we talked about the possibility of cutting, scaling back what the, what was expected. Has this accomplished that, or do we have that yet to do?
I think we've accomplished that with the math.
Okay.
But we still have some challenges with the ELA. But you have to remember now that the ELA includes, this document includes, the anchor standards for college and career ready, which we didn't have in our own. It also includes the K-12 standards and then it also includes the literacy skills for science, social studies, history, and they added in June, the technical subjects. And they are starting that literacy work at sixth grade. So in that sense, for the ELA, we can't say that right now it's fewer, if you, if you just count each of the statements. But I think we've got some good ideas for how you organize this work and into, especially walking, working across content areas where you can build in your instructional units where you're dealing with more than one standard at a time. If you view these as teaching, as a checkoff, as a checklist, you're going to have a problem with this. But that's not how teachers teach. You know, teachers pull in knowledge from a lot of different areas and then because of the way these standards are written, where the, where the expectation is pretty clear that we want some cross, cross content units, instructional units, that's how we'll address some of those issues with, with the number of standards. But, but, but we didn't, they didn't achieve the fewer and you can see they don't talk about that anymore.
No, they don't.
Okay.
I just think he's probably got a comment.
Well, I do.
Don't sing it.
No, while the promise is there.
Why not?
That's right. Actually, I'm glad both of you made reference to the STEM, because I was going to bring that up too, and you articulated that beautifully about the social studies, the science, the technological subjects that have been, or the technology subjects that have been added into, the career readiness piece. But you had asked about, as a teacher, do I feel as though it's hit the mark? Yes, because I've poured over the third grade ones, because this is my world. And so I went completely through that and it's, it's right on the mark, it's developmentally appropriate, and I don't feel as though it is so broad that it's incomprehensible. In fact, I see it just the opposite. It really is going to lead the teacher to better cross-integration as far as cross-content. And that's what we want. And that's why I was so excited to see the science, social studies components brought back in, because, let's face it, in a lot of schools, the push has been that secondary because we have to focus on language arts and math. And so the science and social studies becomes a back burner and that can't happen. And this really brings it to the forefront again, so I think that's a positive gain.
So that's one of the things we talked about this last, Kathy and I were in Washington this last, last part of last week, over the weekend, on NASB business. And one of the study group that I'm on is, is what does the 21st century educator look like and what do we need to know and be able to do? And core common standards, common core standards, I'll get it right yet, it's going to be a few years, came up repeatedly, especially because we had three teaching universities from the, across the, from across the United States as part of our group, who were complaining, say without any thought whatsoever as to what it meant, but that, you know, you just got used to what you wanted at the states and now you're throwing this at us. Quite frankly, I think that's an excuse, but I'll forget that. My question is, do you believe with the work that we have done with our universities and teacher, teaching colleges on what we, what they should know and be able to do, what their students should know and be able to do when they come out ready to be accredited as teachers, ready to be licensed, do you feel that this in any way jeopardizes what we've done so far?
I don't think so. They may have to look at some realignment as well. So they may have to say, are there some things in their teacher prep programs that don't match these? Because the beauty of having the common standards across states is that universities can also gain some cost-effectiveness, because they don't all have to reinvent because they're not looking at all different kinds of, and plus, as you know, universities don't, they will say that they don't train people just for their own states, they train them for, across. So actually, I think there may be some areas, we haven't gone through detail with this with Florida yet, but I think there'll be places where they don't have their curriculum, their teacher prep training curriculum aligned with this and they'll have to make some changes.
But it's not a huge problem.
I don't think so, because we're already so closely aligned that it's not going to be a huge shift.
What do you see as the next step in this, in terms of getting this out to the field and ready to go?
We are in the process of planning the rollouts with our ISD colleagues. With what?
ISD.
ISD.
Yeah, so we've already got pretty much well, well down the road a plan for that, for rolling it out. We've, we've discussed with, a partnership with the ISDs where we will do some initial rollouts and then they will pick up on the more detailed rollouts with their districts. So we, so we've already started that planning. We're, we're aiming to do the first rollouts, the large four statewide rollouts for all audiences. We're aiming to do that in October, start in October, because of feedback from the field where they said August, September was not a good time to start that, so.
You're right.
We listened.
But you knew that already. Thank you so much, I appreciate the time that you've allowed me to take with that.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I moved that we approved.
There's one minor edit that needs to be made in that motion, so they have it down there.
Oh, what's that?
Yeah, we need to correct the, because they added the technical subjects, it's not included in the motion, so you, so what you are approving are the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Literacy in History, Social Studies, Science, and Technical Subjects.
Oh, and Technical Subjects.
We just wanted to add the Technical Subjects in there. And you are approving the Common Core State Standards for Mathematics. So I just wanted to make sure we added that in, because that was a value add as of June.
And that is what you moved.
That's what I moved.
Yeah.
We knew that, sorry.
Her violence, it's just.
And she supported it.
Enlisted?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I wanted to say that this is, you know, it was interesting, when I testified at the House Education Committee in Washington, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that we needed national standards. And they resisted national standards so strong that we had the best standards of the country practically, and other states had very low standards. So this was an attempt to do it from the state basis, get the states to do it, and then they become national standards, but they weren't done by the federal government. So it's, it's to our advantage to support Common Core standards, because then the low states should be brought up and we're not brought down, they're brought up. So I think it's really what we would try to do without the difficulty in doing it, so.
And we could lose the argument of not apples to apples.
That's right.
Right. So I think it's good.
It's good.
Although I did hear, as I said this morning, and when we were at NASB, that some of the Western states are very, and I know that, I read the paper, that Virginia's governor said they were never going to do this. So there are some states that are resisting this.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't know for what reasons, but they're independent.
Not as smart as we are.
I.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thanks to the whole team, Deb, especially you, great leadership on this. And I appreciate it.
And we can now say that we are the first states who have approved the, the standards. We did, Kentucky did approve the draft, but I think, as far as we know, you are the first board to, or the first state to officially approve them.
Put that on the wire.
You know, on a serious note, we said, on a serious note, we said to get today to their communications staff that, if this were to happen, so Marty's going to work on that, right to their communications staff.
Put it on the wireless.
It really is important. I think it would be good to be seen in a leadership role on that. Probably doesn't hurt RTT application. good to be seen in a leadership role on that. Probably doesn't hurt RTT application or anything else. So thank you, board. And now, oh.
Oh, we still have item oh.
Oh.
We still have item oh.
Oh.
Assessment consortium.
Right. So what's the deal on that? We're going to, we have a, let's have a motion and then discuss.
Yeah, we'll do that, yeah.
Let's have a motion and then discuss.
Approval of item oh.
Moved by John, forwarded by Liz. And now, discussion, questions, et cetera.
Well, my first question is, is this an oxymoron on page seven of what you gave us, where it says psychometrically sound scaling and equating? No, never mind.
You don't really want to ask that question.
I just had to ask.
Oh, this is going to be the sign?
Let's see. Again, my questions are kind of process, more process oriented than substance
oriented. I guess what I, my biggest concern when I saw this coming down was not so much that it was there, as, okay, what does that mean in terms of all of the money, the time, the effort that we've put into our MEEP, into our assessments for the state? How do we blend these? And what does it mean in terms of whether or not those, well, I'm just going to ask that one first, and then I'll ask my second question. So, yeah.
Okay. What this means for existing assessments, this is just English Language Arts and mathematics at this point. Of course, there will be some crossover into other subjects on, on the literacy pieces. But this is just English Language Arts and mathematics. And because we have a reasonable, reasonably good overlap, actually, pretty strong overlap between our content standards and the common core standards, we should have reasonable alignment between our existing assessments and the new assessments. The idea, though, is that we would continue to have our existing assessments in English Language Arts and mathematics until these go in place in the 2014, 15 school year. That will be the first year that these are operational. So we would need to continue our state assessment programs until that point. One of the things that the assessment consortium is planning on doing, with the, the application that we've seen at this point, is bridge studies. For, for each state being able to essentially say to schools, teachers, parents, if you scored at this level on the state MEEP assessment, you would be expected to score about this level on the common core assessment. So that there will be assistance, there will be assistance from the consortium for individual states to make that transition from existing state assessments to the new state assessments. This, again, is all, is also only for the general assessments, grades three through eight and 11. Actually, there is an option for nine, 10, actually, in the, in the, in the common core consortium assessments as well. And so it doesn't touch, at this point, the, the alternate assessments. And right now, there actually are discussions about something that would go along those lines for alternate assessments, but it's not fleshed out anywhere near where the consortium has fleshed out for the general assessments. So the plan is, continue what we're doing until the common core assessments go into place. Those would take the place with some bridge studies, bridging assistance as those are put into place in 2014, 15. One of the big differences will be that the high school, the high school expectations will be set to predict college and career readiness. So it is likely that those, that those expectations will become more rigorous, we will have more rigorous expectations for students when we move to these, this common core of assessments.
And we would maintain our MEEP assessments for social studies and science.
Yes.
Because that's not part of the consortium right now. It's only English Language Arts and math.
So, so the next question that I have is, and it may just be a comment, it would seem to me, then, if you have common, at 2014, when you have these common cores, and the assessment becomes common as well, that the development of those test items, then, would become far less expensive, given that everybody in the country would be doing them. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes. So this is, this is something we did talk about earlier. I'll try to recap that. The, the idea is, right now, most states, because of cost concerns, administer a, administer a lot of multiple choice and a few constructive response, because those are expensive. Well, with the new common core, we're moving beyond some of the levels of cognitive complexity as well, and, and we're going to be able to measure those much better. So the idea is, we'll still be able to administer multiple choice where the, where the, the standards allow for measurement through multiple choice. We'll still be able to measure using constructive response, kind of essay type things. Those will probably be scored using artificial intelligence, because that's becoming much more reliable, much more valid, but with additional, but continuing to check validity against human scores and that, that kind of thing. Then there will be a few, what are called performance tasks or performance events per student, per year, where they will be doing something like maybe conducting an experiment, or maybe, no, actually, let's leave it at conducting an experiment, where that might take half a class period, that would be scored by human raters, a, artificial intelligence isn't to the point where it can actually handle that now. And then performance events, which might take one or two class periods, where you might actually put together a portfolio of evidence that would be scored. Because of the economies of scale, we can gain those new types of performance tasks and performance events that we haven't been able to have on our tests for approximately the same cost that we're looking at now, because of the economies of scale. So we're not looking at a decrease in assessment costs, we're looking at approximately the same level of cost, but with much greater coverage, and better coverage of the higher cognitive complexity topics.
Okay. Last question. Because we have been looking at growth assessment, and because that is over a period of time of at least three years, how will we bridge that so that we have common data sets in that growth model?
There, there are, that's a really good question. There are a couple of issues that we are really looking at as a consortium. Talked about this as well, there's kind of part of the vision, the theory of action for this assessment consortium is responsible flexibility based on principles. So the idea is, right now, measurement of growth is not something that is locked down very well across the country. There are four, maybe five models that are being used across the country. Nobody knows really which is best. We are lucky, though, in that we have a growth model that can handle tests that are not on the same scale. That, we do have to make the assumptions that we can identify points on an old scale and a new scale that have approximately equivalent meaning, and we should be able to still identify something that looks like approximately one years of growth, one year worth of growth for one year of instruction. That's going to be part of the bridging assistance that the consortium will, will supply. They will supply the opportunity for states, no matter what kind of growth model they're currently using, to make that transition. And in fact, part of the research and evaluation agenda of this group is to look at the multiple different growth models and see which ones provide the most valid types of inferences that make this, they make assumptions that are defensible, those kind of things. So that, at first, we do believe that there will be a lot of options for states to choose what kind of growth model they will use. And the consortium will be doing a lot of research that will be able to inform states in making decisions later of which way do we want the consortium to go, to settle on one or two.
Sure.
So there, there will be that bridging assistance, not in, only in terms of the scales, but in terms of growth models.
Thank you very much.
Well, and Nancy, that's the psychometrically sound scaling and equating.
We're so glad you asked.
If I do it.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So call in the motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you very much. And leadership, again, Joseph, thank you and your team, and secure.
So now I can sign the.
Now you can sign.
Okay.
Oh, did I sign it too quickly? Well, I knew you could rip it up.
Well, you didn't have to wait for us.
Right, right. Well, that's true. I hadn't thought about it. Well, I would have, though, trust me. We would have just ripped it up if it was a problem. Okay, comments by Board of Ed members. Liz and Kathy.
Yeah, I just, today has been such a wonderful board meeting, because, Mike, you started off talking about your experiences and all this work we're doing to remove barriers and insist on growth and teacher preparation and all of that. And then Rob started talking about representing the adults and student voices as teacher of the year. And the more these words were going on as the day went along, I kept thinking, my gosh, everybody's reading from our universal education.
You're having an impact.
Which talks about all of those things being flexible, yet with high standards. And I just thought it's really phenomenal to be a member of a policymaking group that has a framework for policy foundation that is operationalized in, in the very heavy lifting and good work that the staff is doing and people in the field are doing. So it just, it means a lot to me, and I just wanted to sort of state the obvious. But it is that. And then the other thing I wanted, I did visit three schools last week. I wrote this up for the board, so I won't, I won't talk long. But what I saw happening in terms of the use of data to drive instruction, so that it can be really targeted to kids' needs, taking them from the edge of competence forward. And in one of the schools where I was observing their responsive intervention activities, and the just terrific outcomes that happen, and kids are purposefully engaged, teachers are happy, and it's, there's some really good stuff. And we just need to encourage all of our educators to, to try it, because they'll like it.
Liz, on your first item, by the way, thank you personally, and I think I speak for others, you've given, I've learned a lot from you on this, and I think it helps it build into our way of thinking more than you may know. Each board member has their own impact on staff, probably in ways that you don't know as you speak. We debrief after the meetings, and so, kudos to you.
It's really cool.
Nancy, please.
I'd like to make a quick comment, too. First of all, in your universal education, when we, in our study group.
Yeah.
I managed, I mean, I talked a lot about it in January when we first met, about the universal education, and how we're, I asked the universities in the states that were there, how are you incorporating this? And people kind of like, no, okay. Well, in our final draft.
Yeah.
It's all the way through there.
Oh, Nancy.
So there you go.
That's great.
Secondly, I think one of the things that the study group this time at NASB is very, in very much close alignment with the one that Kathleen was on, in terms of technology. But what is brought very clear to me, and very, and not just me, many of us that are there, is that we need to now look again at that digital divide. Because we're, we're making what 21st century educators need to know and be able to do so heavily embedded within the technology environment, it, it just struck me, as I listened to our final products that we're kind of putting to bed here, that, that, you know what, in a new, in unfortunate way, many of our children with least access will become those of the have-nots again even greater. And many of the teachers that we're turning out, going into those environments, that they've been trained how to access, how to use, how to embed technology, how to make it the way you do your work, to go into a situation where that's not available. It will, once again, really dishearten young educators, and perhaps send them away from the profession eventually. So I think as we go with our technology plans at a statewide policy level, as we look at the legislature and help them understand what education needs to know and be able to do as a, as a part of the state's economic recovery, we need to be ever mindful of how unwittingly, unintentionally maybe, but true nonetheless, we are, by embedding technology, we are making the haves and have-nots once again a bigger digital divide. So I just wanted to share that.
You know, if I may, just because it was earlier today when you were here, but I think the fact that yesterday changed the world in a sense. And, and you can see from reactions in the field and comments in the paper, that just the idea that there is a pretty unassailable measure now for student achievement growth, based on a hybrid measure, and that district, schools are listed from so-called top to bottom. I think what you're going to see, I'm putting myself in this spot, if I were back 20 years ago as a superintendent, I would be rethinking about how many of these handheld devices with the $8,000 a kid that I'm going to buy out of my current budget and not wait for someone else, no matter what kind of district I'm in, because I don't think I can turn it around without it. And I think that might be the way. So it's not so, hopefully what it'll be is enlightened folks that look at what are all these solutions to helping us turn this around. We'd better not be waiting for poor parents to buy an iPhone. That's not going to happen. But maybe what we need to rethink a little bit is 8,000 bucks a kid, you know, and we've got a $100 million budget, which many of these districts do, we're going to invest in those, and we're going to keep them up.
Instead of a textbook.
Instead of a textbook, ideally.
Even within those environments, though, even, even what I'm, I'm seeing is that the broadband is not there even for that.
Oh, that's, that's.
And so you need to make certain that that connectivity is even there.
That's a good point.
Because that's become really clear to me, that, that you can buy all the equipment you want, but if you don't have the capacity to use it, then it's not going to be, it's going to be, the impact will be negligible, let me say that. And, and the frustration level will be increasing, because they'll go to and from that environment, I can use it over here, I get to my classroom and I can't.
Right.
And, and that, to me, is a real challenge that we've got to face.
There were, there was, Kathy saw, there was a front page article at Times Sunday, I think, about still the sort of jury being out on technology fads in particular, you know, like these whiteboards that are being sold as achievement gain, and.
You mean the one that our teacher of the year uses so well?
Yeah. And so, Rob, you know, you may have some perspective on this, whether, you know, the basic point was, unless it's linked to teachers who know how to use these tools, that those are used to be effective learning devices, they can be awash, so to speak. But, you know, it sort of goes back to the teacher or the, the use of this technology.
Sure.
As being critical, with some pieces being enablers. But I want to ask, is the, is the top to bottom list online?
Are you?
Is it on our website? Because I was looking at the two, at the hundred.
Two o'clock yesterday.
Okay.
The top to bottom, we just got.
Meaning all schools, where they rate in, or just the?
You can get them both, we can get both rated.
No, if you go to our site, click on that.
Get it like zero to five percent.
Okay, okay.
If you go to, I think it's column U, it's also the one that shows the percentile, right, Linda? So, you know, 97%, 3%. So you can follow it that way. And it's, you know, I, I hope it creates a dialogue in a positive sense. Because one of the things about measurement, I know I've, I've mentioned this story about my own experience before, people who want to just beat us up can use that the wrong way. The people who are willing to say, as long as you improve, we're with you, then measurement's good, then identifying the problems that we have is good. And I know there'll be a little of both out there, and that's why, in fairness, maybe even to the folks I was kind of indirectly criticizing this morning, in fairness, they're waiting for the naysayers to attack them. But I think if we keep focused on growth and just say we expect growth, and we think you should expect growth from yourself, and you should, your kids will expect that, then we'll be fine. And, and it's certainly better than the old mythology about on a one-day test score that people are being held accountable. That's just not what's going on.
That's not worth, that's not good.
And, 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 you know, I, I think I mentioned this this morning, but it is, it is sad in a way that the ones that have just not quite made the list, who Linda and others have received calls from that wish they had, because they're, they're on the bubble anyway, and they don't have the, you know, these additional resources to help. It's, it is what it is at this point, and.
Maybe they can get state some more money from the, not really, they can get more money from the state, but reallocate them.
Reallocate from, yeah. Liz, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted, there was a couple of comments here about technology connectivity. There's another discussion about licenses and all other things that are across the district. Could we put this topic on our retreat agenda for a little more in-depth discussion? Because I think, you know, then we can look at it in three dimensions.
Good idea.
I just wanted, wanted to say that Washington Post had a front page article about the same.
Oh, maybe it was Washington Post, I saw.
It's one of those 11 papers you read on a Sunday.
I have to be in Washington, too.
It's a topic I, I saw them when I was there.
Lucky you read a paper.
Right. But the, I wanted to say, at our study group, there was a lot of talk about the colleges of education had to do a better job of teaching teachers how to teach the students, how to analyze what they see on the internet, so that they know what, what they can believe and what's, what's not worthwhile. And that's, that's a trick for adults to learn how to do that. And, but that's, that's important, because the kids don't know, they do everything on the internet, and they don't know which is reliable and which isn't.
Well, you just realize how, how, I, I don't know how this happened or not, but that's the one thing that I mentioned, too, was, okay, so how are you changing your, your look at pedagogy, when you talk about teaching in a classroom in a traditional way versus teaching online, versus teaching using online resources? What are the pedag- What are the pedagogical changes that you're addressing with your students? I got to tell you, I got a lot of blank stares. And I, I thought, you know, this is part of the problem, is that we don't have that, I don't think it's that they sit down and talk with them, they don't, oh, yeah, that's right. I think they can do that, it's that they haven't. And so, and so I think it's getting that level of awareness up to all teacher preparation institutions, that there is a pedagogical change. And it's there, it's not that it's coming, it's there.
I know.
So, how do we do it? So, I'm, I'm glad they're going to put that on a-
And I wanted to tell Liz that there were references throughout the presentations in our study group about universal design as well, so that's a national-
It's getting there.
Language, too, so it was, it was quite interesting.
Started here.
Yes, I, gee, we're way ahead of the curve here.
Universal design is in the higher ed act, it's going to be in ESEA and the new idea, it's coming, you know, can't escape.
I got another inquiry about closing, some of the schools that were being closed in Detroit from a teacher who is retiring, but who has been teaching in an alternative school that is among those slated to be closed. And they intend to transfer those children to a regular school, are they going to put them in with a regular school? And is there something that we can do to find out what the plans are, or at least to encourage them to keep some of those alternative programs, to put some of these kids, they're, they're doing better under, because they're in a small setting. And if they're thrown into a big setting, they won't do well and it might upset the other kids. So, is that a good decision and is there some way of persuading Mr. Bob to relook at that decision?
Well, I mean, in general, it's probably happening in other districts, too.
Oh, yeah.
We happen to know this one because it's more visible, and it's, it's, I think, overall, and you would agree, overall, the beauty of local control, most of the time, those decisions are made in the right direction. But, yeah, this one certainly is more for the middle of a court battle, it's, I, I gave to my students last night, and we'll see what I get. I said, I'd like an email of mayor or school board and why. See what I get. I mean, because in a way, it started a little debate class ago, and it's going to be obviously the big thing with the referendum apparently coming to pass with possible mayor control, and, and even then, you get into, you, you, well, I'm going past your question.
Reggie was on, Reggie was on television on Sunday morning supporting the mayor of control, which doesn't surprise me since he was appointee of the mayor at one point, but-
Carolyn, please.
I just wanted to comment that I was on a telephone Friday with NASB as being on the nominating committee. But in some of the discussion with the other board members that were there on the nominating committee, many, many people think that state boards have more power locally, that, yeah, you know, that they get inquiries, just like all of us. What can you do, can you come do? And we were saying it's too bad, because a lot of states are like us, they're local control, and we can't do-
I think what you've done, though, and you're not, you're all kind of saying this, is by setting, like what you did today, and you start setting bars and, and process issues on how to get there, and then, you know, I think it's a point where you should feel really good about that. And then, we want to let districts be as flexible as they can be to achieve those goals. And, and we've got to work at that. We have some folks that, based on Liz calling, some of us giving us an opportunity to sit at a dinner a while back with kind of a hodgepodge group, and I mean that in the best sense, we've challenged them to give us our pupil accounting manual that they think would be ideal, and because it encompasses a lot of this stuff that has blocks, blockages to their work. But cite, is it a law that would need to be changed, is it a state board policy, is it a superintendent waiver, you know, so that there's some clarity about what, we haven't received that yet.
Yeah.
We're kind of waiting on it. But when that comes, it, what happens is you start to take those away and say, you have, you know, total freedom would be strong, but once, John's articulated this quite well over the couple of months, that we set that, and districts need flexibility to get there. And it's one reason, probably right, that we don't have, in that sense, the authority to, not that you're suggesting that, you're just wondering, are they making the right call? If they aren't, it'll show up, you know, it'll show up. And, and that's what happens in a high accountability system that we now have. And I'm, I'm getting a little less, I'm a fairly judgmental person, so I, I'm a little less judgmental in trying to work on it and trying to say, let's see what works, and let's reward those that do, and maybe be open-minded to some things that, you know, I might not, in my experience, thought would work. This technology deal, I think I might have told my folks I worked with this, but I was in, I think it might have been Wyoming, and this kid pulls out his, his phone, and he points it to the window, and it shows the solar system live right there, based on the GPS, and then moved it over here. This kid was like in third grade, and I thought, okay, we're not technically teaching the solar system to what, fifth grade or?
That's third.
Oh, it is third?
It is third.
Okay, well, thank you, Rob, for, but I'm thinking, so how do you, you've got this variety of backgrounds that has come in the spirit of what Nancy's saying, some on their own have picked this up, but, you know, all hands, for these schools that were identified yesterday, they really have to say all hands on deck. Their community, whatever they have to do, all hands on deck, not just an education issue anymore.
Right, it isn't, that's, that's important, that a lot of these districts where they have these schools, it's the community as a whole that has to be involved, and it's very important.
Yeah.
Schools cannot-
Do it alone, but-
They can't do it alone.
But it's hard sometimes to get, and we're part of an establishment, to understand, how do you reach out appropriately to others to invite them in where they really feel like you really want them in?
Yeah.
And what that means for them, and this will, I think this will change that dynamic, because you just, you really don't have a choice at this point if you're in that situation. We do have one other piece of business, by the way. I don't know, for three or four, maybe more years now, we've canceled the July meeting, and we planned our work so that we can get through till August. And just wanted, as you know, it wasn't on, it was on a tentative, but it was only listed as tentative, but we'd have to take formal action, or you'd have to take formal action today if you'd like to do that.
Well, I guess we, we will do without the, the July meeting, but we're going to have a retreat in August, so we'll have two days in August.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Maybe other years, we could look, I know that didn't work out this year, but we could try to plan even further in advance to try to get July to maybe be the retreat, if that's the time. It's hard, it's hard to get, Aileen's doing a magnificent job to get.
That would be nice.
I don't know, please, I, I-
Are we having the July meeting or not? I won't be here anyway, but-
No, I mean, that's-
We need a motion, right?
We need a motion. We typically just-
Cancel the July 13 meeting.
Put it on tentatively.
And I will support it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Move supported, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? And now, I don't know if the retreat's before, retreat's after the next meeting, so we'll see with the next meeting, and I think there's a legislative committee meeting part of that.
Right, right, because we have a lot of issues.
A lot of issues there. Okay?
Yeah.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good meeting.
Thank you all for a good meeting.